ACTV seven, these media broadcasts provide county citizens an opportunity to watch and review our scheduled public sessions. To comply with the governor's proclamation declaring a state of emergency in Maryland, to minimize the person-to-person spread of COVID-19, we suggest that citizens stay home and watch the county commissioners meeting live on our QAC website at www.qac.org/live or on QACTV's television channel, Atlantic Broadband Channel 7, and now in high-definition on Channel 507. To maintain social distancing seating will be limited to accommodate social distancing guidelines. We are screening all meeting participants prior to entering the building. If you have any respiratory symptoms such as fever, cough, and/or shortness of breath, please refrain from attending the meeting and notify a healthcare provider. We acknowledge your participation, and by attending, you acknowledge that this session is both recorded and aired. The scheduled agenda is available on the information table just outside of our meeting room. Press and public comments will be taken and is limited to three minutes. If you care to speak, you must sign the sheet on the information table outside. Comments longer than three minutes can be submitted in writing to the commissioner's office for review. Citizens may also join the live Zoom meeting by going to www.qac.org-publiccomment or they may email comments to publiccomments@qac.org. We will accept comments up until the end of the meeting and read those comments at the end of the meeting during the press and public comment period. During the meeting, we would ask that you turn all electronic devices off and hold personal conversations outside of our meeting room. We will now stand and be led in the pledge of allegiance by County Commissioner President Jim Moran.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could remain standing for a moment of silence for the passing of Supreme Court Justice Ginsburg. Thank you very much. Okay, commissioners, we just had a closed session under Section 3-305B7 of the General Provisions Article to consult with counsel and under Section 305B, Section 1, to discuss personnel. And we did reach some consensus on some mission-critical positions to fill some vacant positions. We looked at one position, one full-time position for economic development and tourism along with four or five part-time positions for that department as well, so they can open their visitor's center. Two animal services technicians, a senior planner for the Department of Planning and Zoning, and a network engineer for the IT department. So can I get a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve those additional job positions.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
All right, thank you, commissioners. That brings us to the approval of today's agenda. Today's agenda for our meeting on September 22, 2020, and the regular enclosed session minutes from your September 8 meeting were distributed electronically for your review. Were there any additions and/or corrections?
No. No descriptions. Nope, I think we're good. Motion to approve the agenda and minutes.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
All right, thank you, commissioners. That brings us to our first press and public comment period. So I will read this, just in case we have somebody out there. "Thank you for taking the time to express your views to the county commissioners during this public comment period. Comments are limited to three minutes in length. Comments longer than three minutes should be submitted in writing. When you come forward, please speak clearly at the standing microphone, state your name, address, and topic of interest. Keeping with the dignity of the office, we ask that you express all views in a respectful and civil manner. We respect your desire and right to convey your message freely, and ask us the courtesy of the board and our citizens at your respective commissioners' requests, and refrain from naming citizens and name-calling when offering any critique." So do we have any folks here?
We have nobody signed up.
We have a clean slate.
We are clean and clear, moving forward.
Okay, commissioners, we have a public hearing at 6:00, so we cannot start that until 6:00, so we can do a few action items.
Yep.
And then we will stop at 6:00 and have our hearing.
Tab 3.
Okay. If you want to turn to tab number 3, we have 16, I believe, 16 action items this evening for your consideration. First one is on page number 1, tab 3, page 1. This is a response letter to the Caroline County Commissioners accepting their initial conditions to continue hosting the Midshore Regional Landfill until approximately 2050. And this is a response letter to that. Their conditions were that we would make any host payments or fees, which would be determined in the future, beginning in fiscal year 2022, and those payments would continue for a minimum of 20 years.
I move to approve the Commissioner President's sign of Midshore Regional Landfill 20-Year Extension Letter to the Caroline County Commissioners.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Well-written letter, Todd isn't well-written. I mean, this is right to the point and addresses everything, so I thought it was outstanding. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
All right, thank you, commissioners. Item number 2 on page 3 is a USDA grant agreement. Economic Development and Tourism applied for a $30,000 rural business development grant for rebranding of our county. And this is the acceptance paperwork for that grant. Its total budget is $40,000. The grant pays for 30, and we had a $10,000 match in the economic development tourism budget, so we'd like a motion to accept that grant and move that forward.
I move to sign the grant agreement and related documentation for the $30,000 USDA RBBG grant to fund a marketing study and rebranding for Queen Anne's County.
Would somebody entertain me with the idea of what rebranding our county really means?
Well, right now, we're live, work, play, so we want to revisit that and decide what we want to be going forward.
And we discussed, we talked a little bit about this at the Kenton arrows Development Foundation meeting this morning, and they actually are pretty excited about it, the folks on that board, and looking at the possibility of a partnership in the rebranding process and possibly taking a look at rebranding the Kenton arrows and Development Foundation, even right down to the point of their logo as well. So I think this is a great idea. You know, I think it's important, you know, we're updating our comprehensive plan that's coming on 10 years old, or it's just over 10 years old, and I think we look at an opportunity to rebrand our county and what this county has to offer. I think it's, I think it's a great idea, and certainly the timing couldn't be better. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
All right, thank you, commissioners. Item number 3 on page 25 is a letter of support. The Department of Community Services Housing Division is applying for an Maryland Energy Administration Low to Moderate Income Grant to receive $134,000 in grant funding. This is a support letter to go with that, and this would be for LED lighting and upgrades to HVAC units and refrigerators at some of our housing authority properties.
I move to approve, I move to agree to sign and submit the attached letter of support for the Queen Anne's County Department of Community Services Housing Division's application to the Maryland Energy Administration Low to Moderate Income Grant Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
All right, thank you, commissioners. Item number 4 on page 27, this is Resolution 20-29, and this is a revision to the program guidelines for critical workforce housing. And a good story with this, our Mike Clark, our Chief of the Division of Housing and Community Services, was helping out at the EOC when he learned that paramedics, the definition of paramedics, wasn't included in the original program guidelines. And it was no oversight originally, but it was something that wasn't oversight, and so they weren't eligible for this program. So this resolution corrects that and adds them to that list of applicable recipients for this loan. So I want to hand it to Mike for making that adjustment.
I move to approve Resolution 20-29 to replace the emergency medical technician to Department of Emergency Services EMS clinicians employed full-time in Queen Anne's County for eligibility to the Critical Workforce Second Mortgage Loan Program as amended in Exhibit A. There's a mouthful.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So, you know, in conversations that I've had with Scott Haas over the years, and I know that Commissioner Steve Wilson as well, and Jack for that matter, you know, retention is something that we're constantly challenged with when it comes to our paramedics and the ability to work in our county and live in our county as well. And I think this is long overdue, and it could add in a benefit piece to retention for our paramedics after they get the training and then they go off and they go work in another county, and now we're still trying to find those, backfill those positions. So I think this certainly helps in the retention.
Well said. I agree.
Yeah, it does not diminish the ability for other individuals, teachers, law enforcement officers, correctional officers, any emergency dispatcher, EMTs, volunteer firefighters, still are able to apply. This was just an additional piece that we wanted to add in that we thought was part of the program initially, so.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Yeah, let's go to hearing.
Go to the hearing?
Yeah.
All right, we'll break there. That's item 4. We'll go to the public hearing next. It is 6 o'clock, so our first one is County Ordinance 20-04, and I believe County Attorney Patrick Thompson is coming in the room to administer the hearing. I think we're just about on time here.
Your watch is slow.
Your watch is slow, okay. And this is for accessory dwelling units in the resource conservation area.
Are you ready?
Yes, sir. This is a public hearing being held in County Ordinance Number 2004, a bill entitled "An Act Concerning Accessory Dwelling Unit Provisions in the Resource Conservation Area" for the purpose of making accessory dwelling unit provisions as outlined in both Maryland National Resources Annotated Code, Section 8, 1808.1, and COMAR 2701,0205, consistent with development standards in resource conservation area and a dwelling unit definition found in Code of Public Local Laws of Queen Anne's County by adding Section 14, 139B2, development standards in resource conservation, and amending Section 18, APP definition of dwelling unit found in the Code of Public Local Laws of Queen Anne's County. This hearing is being held Tuesday, September 22, 2020, 6:00 PM in the County Commissioner's Meeting Room, Liberty Building, 107 North Liberty Street, Central, Maryland. The Planning Commission sent a favorable recommendation to the County Commissioners regarding the proposed amendment. Copies of the ordinance have been available at the County Commissioners' office during regular business hours and online on the county website. To comply with the Governor's proclamation declaring a state of emergency to minimize the person-to-person spread of COVID-19, citizens have been asked to participate via email, live video, or audio. Speakers are limited to three minutes each. Written testimony of any length can be submitted, all before the hearing date, to the County Commissioners. All hearings sites are accessible to individuals with disabilities. Sign language interpreters and assistive listening systems are available for individuals with hearing impairments. Part of the record of this proceeding will be the recommendation of Queen Anne's County Planning Commission in the form of a memorandum from Amy Moore Doc dated 23 June 2020, the approval of the State of Maryland Critical Area Commission, and a certificate of publication indicating notice of night's hearing was published in the Record Observer in Baytown, newspaper of general circulation in Queen Anne's County. Very public comment with respect to County Ordinance 2004.
No comment?
So we have no comment whatsoever via internet or in person, so we'll close press and public comment. Moving on.
We'll leave the record open for two weeks, and we'll vote on that on, I guess, October 13th?
Yes, sir.
Three weeks, yeah.
This is hearing on County Ordinance 2011, a bill entitled "An Act Concerning Updates to Building Code for Queen Anne's County" for the purpose of bringing all codes in line with the most current state and federal additions, international building code, international residential code, international mechanical code, international energy conservation code, national fire protection association fire code, national electric code, national standard plumbing code, illustrated and national fuel code, defining substantial improvement for purposes of automatic sprinkler system installation, providing for additional seals, middle options, increasing the penalties for violations, and generally dealing with and updating Chapter 10 of the Code of Public Local Laws of Queen Anne's County by amending Sections 10-1 through 10-7 of Chapter 10 of the Code of Public Local Laws. This hearing is being held Tuesday, September 22, 2020, 6:05 PM in County Commissioner's Meeting Room, Liberty Building, 107 North Liberty Street, Central, Maryland. Copies of the ordinance have been available at the County Commissioners' office for normal business hours and online on the county website. Citizens and participants have been asked to participate via email, live video, audio. Speakers are limited to three minutes each. Written testimony of any length can be submitted, all before the hearing date, to the County Commissioners. All hearings sites are accessible to individuals with disabilities. Sign language interpreters and assistive listening systems are available. Part of the record of the proceeding will be a certificate of publication indicating notice of night's hearing was published in the Baytown Record Observer on three successive weeks prior to today's date. Very public hearing. Vivian, do you have anything you want to say?
No, that was it.
Very public hearing.
No comment.
Public comment, I mean.
We have no public comments, so we're going to close public comment, and we'll hold this for two weeks and vote on the 13th. Thank you very much.
Vivian, it was so nice to see you.
I see you too.
Thanks for stopping by. Yes, thank you, Vivian. Good to see you. Vivian, are you going, are you planning on having Alan here on the 13th?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, that concludes our hearings and legislative session. If you want to flip back to action items, tab 3, here are item 5. And that was page 32, and this is a request from the Department of Parks and Recreation to purchase two Kawasaki Mules 4x4s from Talbot Powersports in Easton using the CARES Act funding, and there is allocated money in there for this, and that will help them to patrol the, our nature preserve areas and trails to make sure we're exhibiting all the proper social distancing criteria out there in our parks.
Just before we did a motion, I just got a question real quick. On these units, they're pretty good size, and they're full of drive. Shouldn't we be looking at getting plows for them for the cross-island trail and all, so they can be dual-use in the winter? Because we can't get big trucks back there, and even down at the parks, it wouldn't be bad to have plows on these things where they can get back on the trails and actually clear them for people.
We certainly can.
Page 2.
We certainly can. Well, actually, I will check on that. If we can, if we can purchase the plows under the CARES Act, we can do that. We may have to get those as an add-on using our...
Whatever. I'm just, I'll make them full-purpose rather than just be park ranger stuff during the summer. I mean, it's got to be easier to get them on the cross-island trail and all the plow than it is to do any other things, snow blowers or anything.
So we'll make a motion for what this is right now.
I move to approve the authorization, the Department of Parks and Recs, to purchase two Kawasaki Mule SX4x4 from Talbot Powersports in Easton, Maryland. Total amount of funding requested is $18,745.96, funding to come from the CARES Act.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion?
To Jack's question, how far are you, are you with this piece of equipment? I mean, is it, has it got capacity to put trash cans and garbage and stuff into the back of it?
Oh, yeah. They're nice. They got the dump bags.
Okay. Okay. And then the John Deere HP?
They're not, that's not...
No. Okay. All right, I just, we purchased this equipment, and we bring on staff, and we do all these things, and there needs to be a noticeable difference in the, in the eyes of the public. I mean, it's, I mean, it's no secret we're spending a fair amount of money on equipment and staffing, however, it's needed, and so don't, don't misunderstand what I'm saying. I'm just saying, the point I'm trying to make is that if we're going to be spending these kinds of dollars, there has to be a noticeable difference in improvement in what our citizens are actually seeing. And I'm getting positive comments about our condition of the trails after they've been repaved, the new cross-island connection, people are excited about that. I myself use it and see a large amount of people that are using it on beautiful days. So there's a classic example of spending the dollars in the Parks and Recreation area where we're seeing noticeable impacts on those tax dollar uses. Now, I know this is CARES money, and it's different from tax dollars money, but the perception is still there. So I would just make sure that, that we continue to improve the conditions of our parks and our landing areas, and also to include the Kenton arrows marina, because I know we're having some issues and problems down there. Again, a large part of it is enforcement, and we understand that, and of course, you need the staffing for the enforcement. But I know we're raising the bar here, so I would just make sure that our citizens see results from all the expenditures.
Very good. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we're moving to authorize the Department of Parks and Recreation to purchase two Kawasaki Mules XX, SX4x4 from Talbot Powersports in Easton, Maryland. Total amount of funding requested is $18,745.96, funding to come from the CARES Act. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
All right, thank you, commissioners.
Thank you for letting me read.
Item number 6 on page 39, also tab 3, Queen Anne's County 911 Center Renovations Construction Contract Award, and we have our Department of Public Works Chief Engineer Lee Edgar and Scott Haas, our Emergency Services Director, to present these bids. Want to make a motion first or get started?
I move to award the 911 Center Renovation Construction Contract to NCON Corporation of Bladensburg, Maryland, in the amount of $1,360,382.73, and authorize Director of Public Works to issue the Notice of Award and execute the contract on behalf of the County Commissioners.
We need to amend that.
Yep.
We had a last-minute change on that, so can you please restate that, the different vendors?
Delmarva, especially Delmarva Veterans Builders of Salisbury, right?
Yes. No, I haven't. You want to go?
All right, I move to award the 911 Center renovation construction contract to Delmarva Veteran Builders of Salisbury, Maryland, in the amount of $1,353,900,000, and authorize Director of Public Works to issue Notice of Award and execute the contract on behalf of the County Commissioners.
County Commissioner, worry about that.
Done.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Discussion?
Not for me.
Well, I mean, I, yeah, I just wanted to. So, so the numbers I see from the original bids to the award price is about $120,000 different, which...
Not much.
Well, no, 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 no. I'm talking about, I'm looking at Delmarva Veterans Builders bid here, and then what we're awarding it for, there's about $140,000 difference. Do we know what that is?
Correct. So, give you just a little bit of background on it. We have, we received eight bids for the project. Five of the eight were quite tight. The first one, as you can see in your summary there, was very clearly not responsible, made a bad error. The second bidder upon notifying them had indicated to us that they had made a significant error. As a result, their bid also was not responsible. We then went to Delmarva Veteran Builders. They're the third bidder, did speak with the estimator. He is very much confident with his numbers. They're good. You will note that there is an ad alternate that we put in there to ensure that the project came into budget. The primary focus of this work is updating the 911 call center. Most all, there in the building is original, 20 years old. The acoustics are not very good. It's an opportunity to improve that, new consoles, increase the number of consoles from six into eight. Additionally, the building does need a new roof, and we had another project to do that. We put it all in one with an ad alternate for the roof. Now, the basis of award excluded the roof. We were only going to include it if everything fell within budget. Fortunately, this has fallen into budget. Even more fortunately, the third bidder, Delmarva Veteran Builders, when including that ad alternate for the roof, their price is actually lower.
Okay, so instead of the 183, they're at 140 on the roof, basically?
Correct.
Okay. All right, makes sense.
All right, well, I guess, Jonathan, you might need to help me walk me through this, because as we look at this, you know, the funding is coming from approved capital budgets all the way back to FY19, emergency services building HVAC renovations. And, I mean, we are, we are, I guess, I'm kind of confused if we're using money for the air conditioning to redo the 911 center and the roof.
Well, they're combining the two projects, but it will, well, they can probably explain it, but they're including renovations to the building in addition to the 911 center. So they're just sort of doing both projects in one.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, it looks like there's FY19, '20, and '21, all HVAC renovations, and, you know, they're totaling over $540,000. Is that correct, I'm reading this?
Yep. That's correct.
So $540,000 of the, the 1.3 million is, was designated for air conditioning. Are we doing air conditioning?
Yep, that's correct, and forgive me, because I did not identify that the additional element of this work is the HVAC. It is part of the base bid. We did break some of those out, so we knew what those costs would be, and indeed, most all the bids for the HVAC are falling in that 4 to $600,000 number, which is pretty good, because that's in line with the cost estimate that we have.
So you've combined the two projects, because I thought originally, wasn't the 911 center almost a million dollars by itself just for the upgrades in there, or no?
It's right there, 963,750.
It was almost a million dollars.
Yeah. So that's almost a million, yeah.
Well, that's, I guess, well, then I'm confused. If that's almost a million dollars just to do that, it's not 400 and somewhat thousand to do the air conditioning, and then where's the money for the roof?
But your bid's under, you're under your budget by almost 400,000.
I understand that. I'm just, I'm just, I guess, to me, I'm making a point that, again, we have 400 and, or $540,000 for air conditioning, and if, if air conditioning portion of this is $540,000 or if it's less, that's fine. If you're telling me that's what it is, it's coming in at 300,000. You've got 1.3 million and change between the roof, the 911 center, and the air conditioning, and I'm just...
And they've got another, what is on here is anticipated dispersment, so they're anticipating another $200,000 from the emergency number system board, so that is kind of what brings it up to about a million five.
So, I mean, it sounds like the project's coming in at 20% lower.
So you're, but you're counting that money as you're going to receive it.
But that takes you to 1.7, though, Jim. That's what I'm saying. So the project, yeah, the projects, what I'm hearing from you is the project's about 20% under the original budget in terms of what the actual bids were, because they're at 1, I'm looking at 1.503 was the initial budget for everything, right? Is that what you're seeing?
Yes.
Okay, so then, the 200,000 is the 911 fees, the additional 911 fees, who really gave you 1.7, but you're coming in at 1.3, so you're basically about 400 under what your total budget could have been for the projects combined.
That is exactly correct, and yes, the HVAC does take up a significant component of this job, of which the primary work of that renovation is in the call center. And, you know, we felt that there would be a great deal of efficiency, both in terms of staff time, putting the projects in one, efficiency for the 911 call center, and let's do it all at one time, and also with the idea that general contractors will be able to get a better price off it all because we're mobilizing one job, not two, or in this case, three, when you have the roof, the 911 call center renovations, and the HVAC. So we are taking those two projects, those two accounts, merging them into one. We have it all within project, and we are very pleased with the numbers. They did come in very well, and we do anticipate that the State Numbers Board will be contributing a significant amount toward this project. Per the budget, it's not necessary, but we are looking forward to it, and that would leave us with a significant surplus. So we're, knock on wood, very pleased.
Well, we're going to do the same thing we did with DPW. The surplus is going to come back to us. come back to us, to the, to the general fund and for reallocation, so, very good, I'm happy with that, very, very good, I'm glad to see...
That's a great job, I mean, twenty percent off the initial, and then getting the other money kicked in, that's fantastic.
And I'm glad to see, because like you said, I, sometimes I struggle with us putting money in FY nineteen, twenty, and we don't spend it, and then that, sometimes we pull some of that back, where now it's being lumped together as one project, which is fine, but I'd like to see us doing that more in the future versus, you know, we just want to peel some off and set it over here, and then in three years, hopefully we'll have enough to do it. I'd rather do the project and move on than, than that, but that's, that's another day's battle.
How are we doing on 911 dispatchers and staffing matter? Are we where we need to be?
Currently, we are where we need to be. We have one position that was recently filled, and we've got a full complement in dispatch side. And I appreciate you approving the one position so we can get it filled.
Good. Any other discussion? All right, so we are moving to award the 911 Center Renovation Construction Contract to Delmarva Veteran Builders of Salisbury, Maryland, in the amount of one million, three hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars, and authorize a Director of Public Works to issue a Notice of Award and execute the contract on behalf of the county commissioners. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioners.
Enjoy your vacation.
How long, how long's the project going to take, you think? How long, how long are they going to be in the basement?
April.
Well, that's good, that's, that's pretty quick, okay, good.
The assessment, the, well, the criteria for the project is to do it outside of hurricane season, so they're starting right at the end of hurricane season, and supposed to have it done before it starts up.
There you go. You're not going inside, coincidentally with beach traffic, so that's a good thing.
You're doing a four month schedule on that.
They're over there now.
Four months around, November, April?
Part of the deal was we moved everything out, so we didn't have a clear working space.
Well, no, I mean, yeah, definitely with all that work going on. Well, that's great.
Well, he's going on a big deal.
It's a great project all in all.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, our next item is item number seven on page forty-one, and this is a broadband survey to rural businesses, and this was put together by the, our folks in IT, and they're requesting approval to circulate a broadband survey questionnaire for the farming and business, businesses in rural areas.
I move to approve the circulation of the attached survey to gather information as it relates to need for broadband in the county's rural areas.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Just wondering, is this the time, Jack, I should talk about, we should have our own utility company?
Let's, let's, let's wait till after the taxes come in in October, before we talk about that. Got to have money to do that.
There you go, okay. So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, one absent.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item number eight on page forty-four is a series of seven resolutions for nuisance violations, Tall Grass, and this was submitted by our zoning administrator for your consideration.
Thirty-eight oh nine, Graysonville comes up again.
Your house again? It's vacant, though. I said, I'm glad you put that on there, I appreciate that, putting the status of what the houses are on there, because we never had that before, so, if you look at them, most of them.
I move to approve resolution twenty dash forty-one through twenty dash forty-seven to place a lien on each of the properties listed in the county zoning administrator's memorandum, dated September twenty-second, twenty twenty, for nuisance violations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on this topic? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. Item number nine on page ninety-nine is a series of proposals to perform an audit of the housing authority.
We're going to hold that, remember?
Hold that table, this one, table number nine. Okay, moving on, item numbers, the rest are just budget amendments, items ten through sixteen are budget amendments. Item number ten on page one oh one, actually the next four, these are all budget amendments involving CARES funds to our area of aging. The first one, CC eleven is for support services in the amount of twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars, to increase that.
Motion to approve CC eleven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Jonathan, this is just housekeeping to take, basically CARES funding and plug it into where it needs to go to be spent. Fair or some?
Yes, in this particular right, it's for, it's for the Department of Aging, other benefits for eligible clients.
Correct, right.
Is this the planning, any money, Jonathan?
Well, it's not supposed to, but in aging, it seems like there is no, there's no savings under CARES.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve CC eleven, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item eleven on page one oh two, again for the Department of Aging CARES Act, and this is for nutrition services in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Motion to approve CC twelve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, again, this is, so this is basically the accounting by our Department of Aging, taking the time it took for those people that were on the nutrition issues, and we were able to bill it back to the CARES fund.
This is, well, this is actually additional money that might, oh, I'm sorry.
That, there was some CARES money that Department of Aging got that was really outside of that initial part A and part B that we got, so it's really, this will enable them to provide some additional, my understanding this would be home delivered meals that they can do.
Okay.
So it's really over and above what we have.
And this can be spent all the way through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-one, so this is additional funding for that, and these, all these amendments are for those, those funds to be available to us up until September twenty-one.
Good, very good, okay. So again, there's a motion and a second to approve budget amendment CC twelve, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item number twelve on page one oh three is budget amendment CC thirteen, also for the Department of Aging CARES Act, funding for restaurant services in the amount of twenty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars, and again, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
I move to approve budget amendment CC one three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners, and our last one for the Department of Aging, CC fourteen, this one is for, also CARES funding for family caregiver support in the amount of twelve thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Again, I approve, make a motion to approve CC dash one four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. Item number fourteen, page one oh five, budget amendment CC fifteen, and this is for the parks, parking lot paving, and this is an amendment to establish budget authority to spend an additional fifty-three thousand dollars to repave the Bat's Neck Park parking lot, and we approved that at the last meeting.
Motion to approve CC fourteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, I'm sorry.
Second.
Second, yep. Any discussion?
This is much needed.
Absolutely.
Much needed.
Problem is, there's been a fire at the Bramble plant, so they're, hopefully, they're going to move forward with the curbs, I believe, next week, but the paving might have to wait, depending on when they get it fixed, they'll either get paved this October, November, but if it gets too cold, they'll have to wait till spring, just because they'll have to fix the plant, so, that's where that sits. So we have a motion and a second to approve budget amendment CC fifteen, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. And our final two budget amendments are for items we've approved either tonight or last week. The first one is budget amendment number CC sixteen, storage buildings, this is a two-part amendment which provides funding, you know, for the Department of Public Works building and renovation, building out there, increases the spending authority for that project by ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars, and it also reduces the, the original budget for the emergency shelter, storage building project, because it was replaced with CARES funding, as we know, which now makes it available for the public works project.
Very good.
Move to approve budget amendment CC sixteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
All right, and our final item, item sixteen, budget amendment CC seventeen on page one oh seven, this is the emergency service building renovation, we just talked about that with Public Works and Director Haas, and these are the two projects we talked about combining to fund that overall renovation project for the 911 center and their HVAC.
I'll make the motion to approve budget amendment CC seventeen. Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Commissioners, that's all the business we had for this evening, we can try again for pressing public comments, we're about on schedule.
Bruce, you got anything?
Quiet night.
Quiet there, there's nobody signed up, so, roundtable it is. Who would like to go first? One or four?
I'll go.
They're both Wilsons. Okay.
No, he's two.
Two, one or two.
Four.
Oh, I'm sorry. Correct, I'm looking this way, we got the table, anyways, so...
I'll go. I only have one item, and I think Phil's going to probably add on to it anyway, so...
Not unless you do a great job.
That's a lot of pressure. But, so, so I've gotten some calls recently, obviously with the COVID, we've, we've had some problems with our parks, you know, with overcrowding, people doing things that were not necessarily are what we'd like to see, and it's been brought to my attention that down at Waterman's Way where all of our watermen park their boats, there's been some issues within the last probably month of people going down, getting on the watermen's boats, fishing off the watermen's boats, leaving a lot of trash behind, and basically, my biggest fear is for the watermen, that's their livelihood, someone goes on one of their boats, gets injured, they're going to be liable for it in the end. To the extent that, I think the county, we need to step up, and my first suggestion is, and I've talked to Phil about this, is we need to do a minimum put no trespassing signs up on the pylons, to make everybody aware that they're not supposed to be out on those piers, they're not supposed to be on other people's boats and that kind of thing. And I wanted to take it a step further, to even have some kind of enforcement in, via a fine on it, whether it's a hundred dollars if you're caught down there, because, you know, one of the things in talking with the sheriff about it, there, there's really no teeth to doing just a no trespassing sign, you could go down and shoo them off and, you know, arrest them or do whatever you can, but it doesn't really have any teeth, is it a good deterrent? So, you know, I really, I feel for these guys, you know, I've gotten pictures sent to me of them coming down on their boats and having to shoo these people off their boats, and beyond that, I don't want to see any conflicts down there, because again, you know, watermen, they're going to protect what's theirs, and, and so I think it's something we need to take some action on and try to remedy that problem for them.
I think one thing you could do down there would be to put video surveillance on...
Well, we're working on that too, Stevie, that, that actually is in the works, but I think that no trespassing actually gives something to say that you're not supposed to be there, yeah. But we are working on the video there, and as well as some of the other fishing piers and all too, just to be able to have that kind of, yeah. So I, I don't really think we need a motion for it, I just hope...
Those listings are in the works now, I did speak with Director Steve Chanley at the Parks Department about the trespassing signs, no trespassing signs, we can add that, also the sheriff, and we are working on the camera surveillance systems as well, so we will...
Yeah, so the only thing we would have to take up is if we wanted to establish some kind of fines for illegal fishing off of those boats and all that, so it's something we could think about and bring back for the next meeting or whatever, but, that's it.
All right, very good. Number two, Mr. Wilson.
Something we didn't do in closed section or otherwise was discuss this letter, which is a desk item or in the book, I can't tell you, but it struck me, and I think Todd Ma, maybe others, that there's a bit of confusion out in the public as to whether we are responsible for opening classrooms, also, there's not good general knowledge at this point of the healthy financial situation of the county, which I think when you have a nice piece of information like that, that people are concerned about, is a good idea to distribute. So several of us have worked on a letter, which I would like to approve to mail out or publish in some way. I guess you all have seen it, it's here as a desk item, and it does three things, it announces that the finances of the county are in good shape despite the downturn in the economy, which is something a lot of people are not aware of. Secondly, it distributes the, I don't want to say the responsibility for education, to the proper parties, not us. And thirdly, it brings up the health issue, and that is really unusually good in this county, because we have either zero or one person in the hospital, which out of fifty thousand people is remarkable. So I think, as, just as a measure of information to the public, and politically, it's a good idea to send this, so I'm asking that we approve this.
Make that motion.
Okay, I hereby move that we send approximately this letter, there's a typo or two in it, but, that we send this out as a mailing, actually, because it gets a lot of attention.
Okay.
It's a good idea.
We have a motion?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I think it's right on time.
I do, it's a change of season right now, you're going into fall, you don't want to do it at Christmas, this is the time...
Well, and, and not so much seasonal on time, but, you know, there's a lot of speculation and, and guestimating about the condition financially of our county, where we sit health-wise, there's all kinds of numbers out there, you know, regarding confirmed cases and deaths and things like this, and I think it's kind of a, a state of the county, if you will, as to where we are, and, and dot some i's and cross some f's, and gets rid of, you know, the folks that are out there speculating how good we're doing or how bad we're doing, and it addresses, you know, three or four important issues that, that are going on here in the county, and I think it's right on time there.
Thank you, sir. I think one thing, you got a letter, actually, in the mail or other poignant letter from a lady who was suffering with her children at home in the last couple of days, saying, would you guys please open the schools? Well, that's a thing that needs to get answered.
Very good.
I would also like to add, I would like to see it put out on all the social media, besides just a mailing, because a lot of people don't pick up the mailings, but they do, are attracted to social media for some strange reason.
So, March, you can transfer that to our letterhead, and we can get it signed, and we'll, we'll post that, and Bruce will do a good job of getting the message out.
And so, to, is it my turn?
Yes, it is.
So to follow, kind of weave in with what Commissioner Steve Wilson mentioned about the virtual learning and the letters that we're getting, and the emails that we're getting from parents who are going through some, some difficult times and trying to adjust to this home virtual learning, I have to tell you, we're going through that ourselves in my household, with my youngest, trying to adjust to the whole virtual learning thing, and I, and read these letters that come from our citizens, sharing their, you know, what's happening in their households to the point where it's, it's deteriorating the family foundation. You know, siblings are arguing, and, and husband and wife are disagreeing, and there's just a tremendous amount of frustration, so I, I guess, to my point is that I think it's important you continue to send your letters and emails of frustration and concerns with the way the virtual learning is going for some of our students, and drive home the importance of getting some of our students back into the classroom format, especially the ones that are struggling the most, or with the families that don't have that ability, because mom and dad both work, and there's no one to oversee that the child is really completing the schoolwork that they need to complete. So continue to send those letters and emails, direct them, if you want, to the county commissioners as well, although it's really a Board of Ed decision, and moving forward and how we're going to do that, but I think that sending those letters to them, hopefully, will, they'll, they'll see the frustration that's in our citizens' eyes, and the, the parents of the children that attend our schools. The other thing that I had was to, just to pick up with where Jack left off with the Kent Narrows, you know, the Kent Narrows is, is it obviously a destination point in the county, we have a lot of great restaurants and some hotels there, and it really is a focal point for tourism in our county, and, and without being said, the, the amount of revenue generation that comes from there... that comes from there, so I, I'd like to see my fellow commissioners join me in focusing on improving the aesthetic value, staying on board with making sure that, that it always looks its best, putting the necessary resources to make sure the grass is cut, and, and that every part of the Kent Narrows, north and south, always looks its best, people have to feel like it's a place where they want to come and visit. I know there were some times there where Baltimore's Inner Harbor was a great place to go, and, and, you know, discussions of how the city leaders have let, you know, the Inner Harbor go a little bit, and what people didn't feel safe going there, and I just don't, I mean, that's the opposite end of the spectrum, but I, I just want, I want my fellow commissioners to really focus in on the Kent Narrows, and the importance of making sure that it always looks its best, and that we dedicate the necessary resources of staff and equipment and, and monies to ensure that the Kent Narrows does always look its best. That's all I have, thank you.
My turn?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I guess with the passing of Justice Ginsburg, what I'm about to say might have a little bit more importance, we was talking about the importance of people being educated and voting, and how important that is to American society, but another extremely important thing that every citizen has the opportunity at some point is to serve on jury duty, and we're starting back up jury duty, you're going to be getting notices out there, the court is going to start holding jury trials again, I believe Q A C TV will be doing a clip on what precautions have been taken for COVID-nineteen protects you, so I would encourage anybody who gets a jury notice not to shy away from it because of COVID-nineteen, there are precautions that are in place for you, it's an extremely important thing that you do, if you don't have, whether it's a criminal trial or a civil trial, if you don't have a proper jury pool in there, justice gets delayed, and whether it's civil justice or criminal justice, that, that shouldn't happen, there's already a backlog of cases that need to be dealt with by the court, and so, just encouraging everybody, if you get that notice, people didn't want to do jury duty before COVID, and I'm sure they didn't want to do it now, give that a second thought, pay attention to the segment that's going to come out from Q A C TV, and make sure that you do that, that civic duty, it's one of the more important things you can do, and having a jury system out there is one of the greatest things that we have in our democracy, it's extremely important. And then, lastly, I found out that due to COVID, Busy Bodies on Ken Island will be closing, and I know all three of my kids had many birthday parties there, and I'm sure a lot of other parents and grandparents have attended birthday parties at Busy Bodies in Ken Island, so I want to say thank you to Mr. Andy for all that he's done for all the kids that have had their parties there, it's sad to see that close, I'm hoping maybe they'll find some way to, to turn that around, probably difficult considering that kind of venue is just, you know, not being used right now, but it was quite a, I think, a labor of love for him, for the community to make sure that kids had something like that, and it's very sad to see that closing down.
Thank you very much. Where do I want to start? Let's start with our beaches, our beaches, right now, last weekend was the last weekend where we were posting and controlling the, the numbers in the beaches, we have lifted the restrictions, so the beaches are open, there are no more restrictions at this time for how many people can go in, we're, we're thinking we're past the peak time, we are, last night we had a PRAB meeting, a couple committees were formed, one of the committees is to discuss what we're going to do next spring with our one beach and two nature trails, I mean, we don't have, they're not considered all beaches, they're, they're nature trails, shouldn't be fishing out there, shouldn't be swimming out there, should be walking through just the nature trails, but that's something we're going to have to address today, I met with Steve Chanley and some of his staff with the state and D N R up at Langenfelter's to look at possibly a new fishing location, and unfortunately, that's not going to come to fruition at this time, because D N R is up there, and, and they need the entire facility for what they're doing in, in their training and exercises, so it would have been a great location, but we are still looking, hopefully, to find some other location in the county to relieve some of that pressure, especially at the Kent Narrows, so that's one of the things that the Parks Department is working on, I will say, Commissioner Dumanel, to your comments about the Kent Narrows, maybe it would be a good idea to try and find out what kind of revenue the Kent Narrows actually brings to the county, I mean, because it is, it is a destination point, it's a destination point for eating, restaurants, I mean, that's really, that's all, we have, you know, a couple, you know, boat facilities there, but it's a majority of that is all restaurants and eating, and, you know, it, it, it does merit some things, but some things, I think that the Kent Narrows Foundation could take care of themselves, so, you know, I'm all for helping them out and, and doing that, but that's just something we need to take a look at. Speaking about traffic, because this is the traffic chair, yesterday, excuse me, Sunday, we had our second over-ten-mile backup in three weeks, I was in contact with Secretary Slater during the, that episode, and I had, so a couple christenings at my house, and everybody that went home at five o'clock said the same thing to me, they called me an hour and a half later, when they finally got to the bridge, and said it's the steel plates, people are crawling up to the steel plates, once they bump over them, away they go at fifty, and, and this gets back to the issue we had last fall with the, the deck replacement, you know, why, there is twenty-two joints that need to be replaced, and there's still, I think, twelve to go, I think, I think, I counted them today, twelve to go, why aren't we doing joints on both sides of the main span at the same time? If you're going to slow down for two, you might as well slow down for four, you know, the only silver lining to COVID is there's less traffic, with the exception of two of the last three weekends, there's been less traffic, so we've been able to, you know, handle it, next year, if COVID vaccine, God willing, and things get back to normal, that traffic's going to come back with a roar, this project for these, these joint replacements is not going to be done until the fall of twenty-one, so, you know, we're going to deal with this all next year also, and that was my, you know, in, in the brag, I mentioned that, yesterday I mentioned that, that why aren't we doing four of these at the same time, cold weather's going to come, they'll stop doing, they'll pick it back up at the end of March, April of next year, more steel plates to deal with, which in turn is going to be more backups and, and more frustration for, for county residents, I will say there is a plan for the traffic, and, you know, I'm not going to, I don't want to talk about it right now until the state really comes out with, with their full plan, but they do have something that they're, they're going to be trying next year to help alleviate the issues on Sunday afternoon and evening, I'm going to give them the benefit of the doubt for now, and hopefully it works, and we go from there, other than that?
So, Jim, you know, we, when we were dealing with the, the redecking, and, and it seemed to me that there was a tremendous amount of frustration and angst, there was, Peter Francho was very public with his opinions about how that was being done, and, and then we got our governor involved.
Well.
And our governor, I mean, we worked day and night, we, you know, I mean, they, they sped up the timeline from two years and they cut it in half to one, you know, maybe, maybe we're, we're staring at a letter from this board to our governor, you know, pleading with him to, to act like he did when they were doing the redecking for these, these seam replacements.
Well, it can't hurt, for sure, and, and I will say that anybody that travels the bridge a lot, you know, Jack and I, we can cross it almost every day, but if you sit in the right lane and look at the center lane as you go up to the, you know, you're going westbound on the eastern shore side, look at the amount of patches in the center lane, look at the amount of areas that the deck is failing, and I've asked that question, and they said everything's fine, but I, when that deck, the third lane was redecked, there were no patches in that center lane, drive up there now, look, and it's just, it is, the degradation is, is accelerated, so I wouldn't be surprised if within the next two to three years, that center lane's going to have to be done, I mean, it's that bad off.
Yeah, to me, this plate issue is literally crazy, because if there was a one or two-foot wide slope transmit, transition.
Right, which we asked them for.
Mahoon and I drew these damn things up and sent them to Pines, and got no response to it, and those things could be bolted into the ground, and then when they lift the plates out to work at them at night, they could stay there, and then you just drop the plate back in, and when they do the other bridge, they could use them for that, but this, there's no reason for that transition to be three inches wide, it's no help at all.
I agree, and we said it on the brag.
Complicated problem.
So, you know, maybe, maybe it's time, like you said, to write that letter, we're getting towards the end of the season, the weather's going to change, but, you know, again, you know, the, I don't know that traffic wouldn't slow down still to hit them, because some people just are terrified, maybe it's all the stuff they have on their, on the roof and everywhere else, they hit the bump and off goes the, the lawn chair, but, you know, I, you know, I guess that's a concern, and, you know, but again, you know, to me, anytime you're going to disrupt any type of traffic on the bridge, you need to do it in the least amount of time, and I don't know why we have two sides of the main span, we cannot work on both of them at the same time, nobody's been able to give me the answer to that, it just isn't the way they, they write the contract, this is the way they do it, so we're going to see that, and, and again, we're two years away from them to start redecking the eastbound bridge, and that's supposed to be done modular, so hopefully that'll be at night, they'll be just cutting and replacing, pulling sections out, and, and that won't be an issue, but, you know, we're a long ways away from the completion of the railing, the painting's finally done on the second, the false channel, so the painting's done, all that rigging's gone, and that's a good thing, but those railings, your, your famous railings that you see, you know, still look like, you know, they need a lot of help, so.
Let me just interject here, at, at our next meeting on October thirteenth, that is our C T P M dot tour, it is going to be via Zoom, so we'll have an opportunity to address all these things, and we'll make sure that they're ready to respond to the problems we're seeing out there.
Very good.
So be prepared for that, that's at our next.
I mean, like I said, you know, the, the removal of the tollbooths was great, I mean, just, you know, I, I look at it this way, you know, we hear a lot of things from the western shore, and, and, well, Anarona County has the, you know, the peninsula and it backs up, and, you know, that's true, but, you know, the, just, the, the information alone, I think that accidents are down almost forty percent eastbound, because there's no stopping and going at tollbooths, so it's reduced it, so we've had less backups, who here thinks that in the last two weeks, two ten-mile backups going eastbound wouldn't have everybody and their brother up in arms? I mean, you know, I'm just saying, you know, we had that one major backup of ten miles when they were redecking that third span, or that third lane, and that's when Francho and everybody else came out, and, you know, they were up in arms, and they tried to put, implement contraflow back in, which was a nightmare and a disaster for Queen Anne's County, and here it is, we've had two back, you know, two out of three Sundays with a ten-mile plus backup, it's just, it's crazy, and it's just not going to get any better, and, you know, we, it goes back to, you know, we've suggested the contraflow, the staging and, and some of these things, but Secretary Slater is willing to try some of these things, and that's why they're getting some things together now, and, and hopefully we'll see some improvement next year, so with that being said, who wants to make the motion?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.